To call the order, the January sixteenth, May the two thousand nineteen Frederick County Planning Commission. This time I'd ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. First item on the business is our agenda is a motion to adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion? Adopt of tonight's agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? The next item on our agenda is our meeting to adopt our schedule and our bylaws, rules and responsibilities for that. I turn over to Mr. Ruddy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Welcome to two thousand and nineteen and let's get right to work, if you will, and that is to address the Planning Commission's Chairman, Vice Chairman and Secretary positions. First, we will open nominations for the Chairman of Frederick County Planning Commission.
I nominate Mr. Kevin Kenny to be Chairman of the Planning Commission for the year two thousand and nineteen.
Second. Move nominations be closed?
Second.
All those in favor of Mr. Kenny being the Chairman of the Frederick County Planning Commission for two thousand and nineteen, say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Congratulations.
Thank you. I think.
And with that, we'll move on to the Vice Chairman of the Planning Commission.
I nominate Mr. Roger Thomas.
Second.
Move nominations be closed?
Second.
All those in favor of Mr. Thomas as the Vice Chairman of the Planning Commission?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. One of the leaders with the secretary and I have to move away for that one.
Okay. Make motion to appoint Mr. Mike Ruddy as our Secretary of the Planning Commission?
Second. Move nominations be closed?
Aye.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Welcome back to the. Thanks, sir. Alright, the formality is out of the way. The next item on our agenda is we do adoption of the minutes for November seventh and December eighth, two thousand eight. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thanks. That's why I got these two guys here. Next item on the meeting is adoption of our bylaws, rules and responsibilities.
Move we accept them?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Now we're back on track? Good deal, thanks. Our next item on the agenda is the adoption of our minutes for November seventh, two thousand and eighteen and December fifth, two thousand and eighteen. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. So moved. So our next item is our committee assignments. I want to run down through that real quick before we get to committee reports. As is, I want to keep the committee assignments as we have. Do I have a time to adjust or do I have any input from the people that serve on those committees? So this month I'll be making some appointments and some reassignments. But if you have any that you would like to share with me, just contact myself and we'll do any requests we can. The next is our committee reports and the first one is Frederick Water, Mr. Unger.
Yes, sir. We met on December the eighteenth at five o'clock at the office there. And the first item they discussed was a capital improvement plan for two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-nine. And they got, the biggest thing they've got for the next ten years is a hundred and fourteen projects coming up. That total about ninety-two million dollars. About eighty-five percent of that is going to strengthen the water supply in Frederick County. And about a third of that money will be going to the Opeckin Water Treatment Plant, or the Opeckin Water Supply Plant and which is coming up very, very soon. And they're going to take that to the board to hold a public hearing, January the twenty-second at five o'clock to see if they'll accept the public comments from anybody and try to get the capital improvement plan approved. The other thing they talked about was the Opeckin Water Supply Plant. They have started clearing trees along the woodlands down there for the water line to come up through from the creek all the way up to the plant. And the pipeline is being designed right now and it's nearly completed. And they have provided Virginia Department of Health to review that to see if everything's going to be okay. And they have got a new leader in charge of that now. It's A R C A D I S. And they are taking care of the project as we speak right now. And they are also, A R C A D I S is also working on the well sites on the new location to get the plant going until until they get the water from the creek coming up. So they're working on that also. And the customer base right now is sixteen thousand connections or a little over sixteen thousand. The monthly average is five point five million gallons per day, which is about what it usually runs in the winter time. And another thing that we're doing, because the quarries are so full, Stephen City Quarry is actually real full and it's increasing every day, it seems like. We're pulling two point eight million gallons a day out of that quarry, which means we're buying less water from Winchester. We was buying about two million gallons a day and now we're buying just a little over a million gallons a day. So that's a significant savings to the water system.
Yes, it is. Thank you, sir. All of our other committees did not meet, so we'll go right to the Winchester Planning Liaison. Ms. Lacy Burnett?
Hello, thank you for having me. So we met yesterday, January fifteenth at three P M. We had our election of officers. Chairman Mark Loring, Vice Chairman Kelly Wolf will remain for the following year. We had two orders of business, one being an ordinance to rezone four point four acres of land at thirty-one thirty-one Valley Avenue. It's currently zoned in the Highway Commercial District and a portion is a quarter, a quarter enhancement district. And this is, they're planning on doing a planned unit development overlay that was favorably unanimously approved to go to city council. The second one was a request for the Healthcare Development Partners for a conditional use permit for the Winchester zoning ordinance of waivers from area, height, density, bulk, width and landscape regulations at three thirty-three West Cork Street, as we know the old hospital. This was favorably approved four to one to move to city council and we did add eight conditions to that approval. And that was it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well. Thank you.
And our last committee report is our Frederick County Board Supervisor Liaison, Miss Trout. Thank you.
Good evening. Board Supervisors met on Wednesday, January ninth at seven P M. We re-elected Mr. Lofton as our Vice Chairman. And then we had two orders of business under planning. We had a request by Wesley Housing for a resolution for local housing. PIN number fifty-four dash A dash one twenty-eight. We voted to delay that until January the twenty-third. And then we also just received information about a site plan for subdivision number twenty-two dash eighteen in spring run. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is citizen comments. Normally we save this portion for citizen comments, for anything that's not on our agenda. The one action item we do have on the agenda, we had a public hearing last year. And since there is no opportunity for the public to speak at an action item, we are giving you an opportunity, if you would like to speak at on the rezoning item that we have before us as an action item, this would be your time to speak to us as committee. So if anyone would like to come forward and speak, this is your time. If you would, just come to the podium, give us your name and district you live.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Wilbert Washington here with Chapter Washington on behalf of Autumn Glen. Homeowners Association, they are the neighboring property to the subject property today.
I take it you're their spokesman?
I am their spokesperson.
You'll only hear. Okay, thank you.
I thank you again for your, the opportunity to speak to you. I know that we missed the public hearing before, but we did want to give you an opportunity to understand the position of the community. In brief, they would like to look to you for protection from the noise pollution, light pollution and water intrusion that may come from the planned rezoning. The owner looks to relax some of the restrictions on the use of the property that were put in place to protect the community and any other neighboring community, but primarily them from the nature of the development of the property. And we would like to make sure the protections remain for the association and the members so that they can have peaceful enjoyment of their homes. Noise pollution is a problem that can be addressed through appropriate vegetative barriers, earthen barriers or berms, distance buffers and sufficient buffering to be able to protect them against the noise that will come from there. But most importantly, we would care about the hours of operation. It's very important that you protect the community from loud noises between eleven P M and six A M. And that can come from protections through the blocking of the loading and unloading of trucks at that hour. Trash dumpsters being loaded or emptied during those hours. Having businesses there that would have a lot of noise, like bars or restaurants where loud crowds would come out at one A M, midnight or two A M. Protecting them against those kinds of noise intrusion will help them since they're so close to the planned development of the property. They also would seek that you would protect them from light pollution. Again, the vegetative barrier, trees, shrubbery and the planting thereof to protect against the lights will be beneficial. In addition, having appropriate directional lighting and requiring appropriate directional lighting and shielding so as to prevent the light pollution from interfering with their sleep and by keeping their yards from being too well lit at night and they can keep the, at least the semblance of the quiet and the freedom from light pollution that they had before. We know it won't be perfect if you go forward, but at least it will be better for them than leaving, totally taking or relaxing the protections that are currently in place. Third, we want to address water. Make sure that, we would like to make sure there are protections in place to prevent water from coming sheeting across their property, that there's an appropriated effective stormwater management system, which I'm sure you will address. Protections against silting during construction. These types of protections are important, but most importantly, protection against long-term runoff from all the paving that is likely to ensue and making sure there's appropriate sloping and protections against flow onto the property which would devastate their property values, increase their cost of maintenance and make it difficult for them to survive the implementation of a reduction of the protections that are currently in place. We, of course, would love things to stay the way they are. We hope that you would agree to do that, but knowing that that's not necessarily likely, we would at least like you to be mindful that the hundred sixty-nine homes representing about two hundred and fifty constituents do need your help and your protection and we hope that they can count on you to provide that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak to this matter?
My name is Darryl Volchki. I came to the meeting last year about this property. The first thing I want to just bring up, I did not receive a letter about this meeting. I did about the one that occurred in November and I was just curious to get clarity why that wasn't sent out, if that's not standard or what that was.
We had the public hearing and I maybe had to over to my right here, but we had the public hearing back then. That's the only notification.
Okay.
So it was postponed till now.
I just know I got tabled and I thought somebody told me that I should get another letter so we know when it was and I didn't receive. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss it or something along that way.
I think I'm clear on that, but yep, I'm getting, I'm getting nods in the head, so yes.
It occurs after this item moves from the Planning Commission onto the Board of Supervisors, there will be a second public hearing at the Board of Supervisors to which you'll be getting notification for that public hearing also.
Perfect, okay. My property is just north across from Macedonia. We're just kitty corner from the, I guess, the north end of that property looking to do. I think I have a different perspective. I'm also a business owner in the Opeckin District myself. I've been a business owner there for about thirteen years. So I mean, I encourage, I would like to see that area developed to a certain degree because it's more property, might allow us a new office that we could expand our own business that way. That being said, I feel like the only reason they're asking for this change is the property isn't selling. And I feel like changing that time restriction is just for one person only to benefit, which is really the owner herself, or I think it's her. And I, that part I don't really like as a resident there. I feel that I think they said the last meeting, this was already set, twenty, twenty-some years ago, these were going to be the restrictions for this property. And now all of a sudden in two thousand and nineteen, property's still there and they want to change the restrictions just to make it more favorable to sell at the detriment to us that live right near. And I know there's going to be buffers and stuff, but it's going to be a huge change for us that have lived there and those proffers were already set when we bought our property. So I would just strongly encourage you to vote against that right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any citizen comments on any matter other than what's on the agenda? If not opposed, the citizen comment portion of this, we'll move into our action item, which is the rezoning of number zero four dash one eight for Tasker Road and Warrior Drive Commercial Properties submitted by Greenway Engineering to rezone twenty point two four plus or minus acres from the B two district with proffers to the B two district with revised proffers and point six two plus or minus acres of land zone RP district with proffers to the northwest and southwest corners of the intersection of Tasker Road and Warrior Drive in the Opeckin Magistale District and are identified by property identification number seventy-five dash A dash one oh four and seventy-five dash A dash one oh four E. Ms. Perkins?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As you stated, this is a request for a proffer amendment for property zone B two and RP to revise proffers. Now, the subject property was rezoned with proffers back in nineteen ninety-eight. With that rezoning, it restricted the hours of operation. It stated that businesses needed to be closed from six A M, sorry, eleven P M to six A M. Now, you may recall this was postponed at your December meeting to tonight. If I can direct you to the screen on your left, subject property is outlined in blue as you can see in this area and the orange coloring designates the commercial, the current commercial zoning of the property. Now, the applicant is requesting to remove hours of operation for the majority of the land uses permitted in the B two district that could be constructed on the property. Hours of operations for uses such as restaurants, repair and amusement services are still proposed to be restricted from eleven P M to six A M. However, all other uses could operate twenty-four hours. Now, I would note that the applicant has added a new proffer since your December meeting that states it prohibits deliveries between eleven P M and six A M. There's also some other minor revisions to the S I C codes, the transportation proffer and a new monetary contribution for fire and rescue. So as you stated earlier, the public hearing was held at your December fifth meeting. Tonight, we're seeking a recommendation from the Planning Commission to forward to the board. I'd be glad to answer any questions and Mr. Evan Wyatt is here on behalf of the application.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. Any questions of Ms. Perkins's committee?
I have a question. I believe I heard Mr. Washington say that they could block entrance to certain areas at the, during the time that their time restrictions are. So that, that would be something to keep tractor trailers from just going in there and running all night if they could actually physically block them going back. Is that, did I understand that right?
I didn't speak of a physical blocking.
Oh, I, that's how I interpreted.
Restrictions of it.
Okay. Just we don't get back, playback between audience members and here, we direct to President Ms. Perkins and we'll go from there.
That's not something addressed in the application. I would have to defer the applicant if they'd be willing to do something of that nature. If they did, it would be at the site plan stage.
Okay. Thomas?
With restricted, restricted hours, you know, if we put restrictions in there, no engine running, no brake popping, air brakes and all that, who enforces that?
That would be up to the planning staff to have to enforce it if we got complaints. We would have to go out and do an investigation.
And I hate to remind us of this, but we've had a problem on Fifty West for twenty years with complaints and misuse. And we still have a conditional use permit out there that's in place. And I'm sure that next year we'll be getting more complaints. So our ability to enforce no operation between eleven and six is probably by the citizenry is very questionable. I mean, planning staff does a great job and you try hard and all that, but your enforcement tools is very limited. I guess that was just a comment more than a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any, any other comments, questions for Ms. Perkins? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Evan Wyatt with Greenway Engineering representing the conditional zoning amendment application. You may recall that we were at your previous meeting. The question before you was to revisit the proffers that were adopted twenty years ago to determine if there were certain land uses in the B two that may not be offensive as far as noise and therefore might be seeking relief from the hours of operation. And we talked about things like grocery stores, office buildings. We talked about some retail type uses. And after we talked through that, the, the question from the commission similar to one of the comments you heard this evening was the concern with delivery trucks between those hours, particularly with tractor trailer trucks and refrigerated trucks that might sit there in idle in late hours of the evening. So the question was asked of us at that meeting, would that be something that we would be willing to consider incorporating into the proffer? And you may recall that, that I said I really wasn't at liberty to commit to that at that point in time, that we wanted to talk to the property owner, we wanted to conduct some research and then come back to you. With that, we requested the tabling and so, so we've had an opportunity to do so. So a couple of things that we looked at, of course, you have similar examples with developed commercial properties where there's grocery stores or bigger box retail, et cetera, that join and are very close to existing planted residential developments. And we looked at those and the two things we wanted to determine was, is it, is it a big deal, if you will, to restrict hours or delivery hours late night for these uses? And with the grocery stores, we were advised that that is something they do desire to do. And then the other thing we wanted to try to figure out was with these existing uses that operate without hours of restriction and have delivery opportunity, has the planning department received noise complaints for those? And we were advised they had not. Now, once we did that, there was a second outreach. I was contacted by the, the HOA and the Property Management Group that represents them and we were able to get together and talk. And even though Mr. Washington, who addressed you tonight, wasn't part of those meetings, everything that he, he discussed in his comments were exactly the, the items that we spoke about when we met. And what we were asked to do, and we prepared a very detailed information piece for them to carry back to their association. And it did talk about things such as stormwater management, such as light, such as noise, such as buffering, et cetera. And we gave that to them so they could share that with the membership. So what I wanted to do, because they were mentioned and the residents are in the meeting this evening, just to make sure it's clear, the way the proffer is written, what we're requesting to do is to maintain the same uses that were originally prohibited from being there, period. And we've added a couple of additional uses that have been added to the ordinance over the years that weren't part of the original. So we've maintained what was originally agreed to be prohibited and we've added a couple uses. Now, for the uses that are allowed that are restricted by hours of operation, we took a look at those and as was discussed, we identified things that we thought might not be appropriate to be open late nights, such as bars, such as restaurants, such as amusement facilities where younger people might congregate. And those still remain the hours of restriction. So even though they could be developed on the property, they're not allowed to be open past eleven and until after six A M. So then the last thing we've looked at was the, the comments about buffering. There was confusion as to whether or not this property would need to be buffered if it was developed and the answer clearly is yes. And we gave them information in the, in the document that we put together that explained exactly what would need to happen. With lighting, we also provided them with information from the county's code. And it does require lighting to be downcast shielded. There is photometric lighting plans that have to be done with site plans that demonstrate that there's no light spillover at the property line, things of that nature. And then with water, we talked not only about stormwater management, but how the regulations have changed, not only to make sure that we have to retain water on our property and let it discharge no more than what it's doing now as an undeveloped property, but we also have to treat it for quality measures before it's discharged. So we gave them that information. So the only thing that we talked about that I wasn't ready to commit to was they said that with all this information, that was great and they would carry back, but they still believed that there would be a concern with the deliveries during those hours. And so what we did, even though it would not be totally an ideal situation for what we're seeking and, and the ability to try to address what concerns they may have, we went ahead and added the additional language into the proffer which prohibits deliveries between eleven and six. So the information before you is virtually the same as what you considered at your last meeting with the additional restriction for deliveries, which is in item B at the bottom of that paragraph. So with that said, I think I've covered everything I heard that Mr. Washington presented. And once again, we're, we're trying to provide some more flexibility for uses that otherwise, if you were going into a building such as a grocery store, an office building, we don't believe would be offensive if they were open at other hours of the evening for seasonal use or, or for everyday use. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Wyatt? Thomas?
Yes, Evan, I appreciate the, the restrictions you added. However, there's been some questions that have come to my attention from residents. You know, we restrict deliveries from ten to six.
Eleven to six.
Eleven to six, yes. What would happen to a delivery truck that arrives late, for whatever reason, ten thirty and sits there all night with its air brakes popping and the engine running? That's not prohibited from the way I read the, the language. Now, maybe I'm reading it wrong, but deliveries could, could be construed to just be actually unloading the truck into the facility that's there.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. Would the language be better crafted that goes to the board that talks about prohibiting deliveries and staging of vehicles during that period of time for waiting deliveries?
Where no delivery trucks will be permitted on the site from that time?
Something of that nature. We're fine with wordsmithing it. Our intention is to make sure that between eleven and six, they, once the properties are developed, there's no noise impact outside of the building. So that's not a problem.
Well, all of the other potential impacts are easily enforced. Lighting is a static feature that planning staff and others can go out there, measure it and change the direction of the lights. The stormwater management, we have very good regulations on that for quality and flow, so that's not a problem. Buffering is easily enforced. What I'm really concerned about is the noise. And again, you know, I said this at the last meeting, I was here twenty years ago when this was rezoned. It was a huge concern of the neighbors at that point. If the strip mall would have been built before the residents were built, I would have a different approach. But the residents have been there for twenty years and have been living there with a commitment in the back of their mind that, okay, we have these protections, no, no noise between eleven and six. Now we want to change that. And I'm having a difficult time on how to justify that to myself and justify that to the neighbors that live there. Because we made a commitment to them and we're the ones now that are breaking the commitment. And I'm very concerned over staff's ability to enforce that noise problem. Like I said, we've had other issues around the county. We haven't done a very good job. I mean, our, our tools to enforce it just aren't very, aren't very good. So I don't know how we enforce. I mean, we get a commitment from the developer. That's all well and good. Developer sells the property, somebody builds on it, we have a use comes in there. And every other night or every third night, they have a delivery truck there in the middle of the night that wakes up the neighbors. What, what do we do about that? How do we enforce it? And I don't see how we can. I mean, I've thought about this, you know, for a while, talked to a lot of people about it and I'm still very concerned about it. And I know I'm the one that came up with the restrictions between eleven and six and you very accommodatingly put that in there. But I'm not sure that gets us to where, gets us back to the commitment we made to the neighbors that lived there and lived there twenty years ago. the neighbors that lived there and lived there twenty years ago. So, I, I guess I'm looking, I'm struggling with how to, how to reconcile this.
Yeah, the, it's, it's a difficult thing to say never. I think the Route fifty example might be a little bit different animal, because that is a, a tractor trailer route for other things, where this would be exclusively a destination trip for a tractor trailer truck. So, I think there's, there's a difference there and, and the potential. The, the fact of the matter is, if, if we maintain the hours of restriction for all the uses, as, as is today, and the property does develop, that still doesn't prohibit the scenario that you're coming up with, whether the businesses, such as a grocery store or an office building or whatnot, would be open after eleven, between eleven and six, if that was something that would be considered. I, I still don't know how you would guarantee the delivery guy coming in. We can restrict, we can, we can work with the businesses to make sure that the scheduling is done, but, you know, the, the scenario that could it maybe happen, sure, I'm not going to sit here and say never. But I think this is a little bit different than the Route fifty scenario you all have been dealing with. The only thing I can add is we're, we're willing to offer, in addition to the no deliveries, to also prohibit the tractor trailer parking on the properties between those hours as well. That's really all I, all I can suggest.
Based on your knowledge of the S I C codes that are allowed for the twenty-four hour operation, what would be the most intensive delivery use? Is a grocery store?
I think a grocery store. Yes. I think some of the retail uses that, although they may not be open twenty-four seven year round, but they might want to have some flexible hours during holiday seasons, like a Target or something like that, I think that that's less likely. I think the grocery stores are probably the, the concern for deliveries at night.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Brooks?
Hardware stores, that would be the other one, loads for bringing lumber. I guess I could still do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is an action item. Any other questions, discussion?
Well, a little, little discussion. I want to, and for the record, I received quite a few emails. I don't know if I should read the names, but I received ten emails, a couple letters, and I will send them to staff to be part of the record of what's going forward to the board. The way I read the emails and the letters, they were pretty much unanimously not in favor of this rezoning to allow the twenty-four hour operation. Very concerned over the impacts that Mr. Washington outlined. I'm very concerned over our ability to enforce the restrictions. I, I can understand where the developer's coming from, but, you know, maybe some would say I've been around on the planning commission too long. I have a problem with committing to the citizenry and receiving proffers for a rezoning and us passing it based on the developer's request and commitments, and then twenty years later, because a developer can't sell the property, and he wants to come back and change the game, the rules of the game, so it makes his property more valuable and he can sell it, I have a real problem with that. We're all citizen members. If we lived in that development and we bought a house in that development based on commitments that we had seen provided, and those residents were there before the, the strip mall was rezoned, this is different than the one across the street, where the, the strip mall was built first and then the residents came in later. I, I think, myself, I would have a very hard time not honoring the commitment I made twenty years ago and voting to restrict it. Now, not all of you were here twenty years ago, so you don't have that commitment. So, you guys can, you know, I don't, I don't know how else to solve this problem at this point. I, I would like to come up with a solution, but I don't see a solution, because I don't see our planning staff being able to enforce the noise problems. We can enforce everything else. We can enforce the lighting, we can enforce the buffers, we can enforce the stormwater, but the noise, you know, what's the penalty if every other night or every third night, there's a tractor trailer comes in there at three in the morning and wakes everybody up? No penalty to us, no penalty to the staff, other than they'll get a lot of calls the next day, but what, what do we do? There's no, there's no penalty to the owner of the business, and he'll get a complaint. That's it. So, you know, I, I think we owe the citizenry there a commitment. We've made the commitment. The other part of this is what we do tonight will probably set a precedent, because we have a lot of rezonings out there where we've passed that aren't developed, and we have proffers with restrictions based on what we've committed to the neighbors and the people in the surrounding area. If we back down on our commitment on this one tonight, what's to stop all of them from coming in over the next year or days and saying, hey, we don't like the restrictions we did five years ago, ten years ago, we want to change it to make our property more valuable, make it easier to sell? And I think that's a very slippery slope for us to go down on. So, even though I have, I have a lot of empathy here tonight, I will not support this rezoning. I think it should stay as the original commitment was, and that's my feeling. When we need a motion, I'll certainly make a motion.
Any other comments?
I'd like to say I agree with Roger a hundred percent. How can you change a proffer and feel against the citizens? They, they bought those, those houses with, with this commitment in, in mind, and I don't see how you could change it.
Good. Anyone else?
Just a brief statement, and I do agree with Roger about this, but with what Evan said, if a grocery store does go in there and they do close at eleven o'clock, it's still not going to stop a tractor trailer from pulling in there and running its motor all night. I mean, that could still happen anyway. If this place gets developed, you still have the potential of that, just because it's there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? All right, I'll cut the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny rezoning application zero four dash eighteen for Tasker Road and Warrior Drive commercial properties for the revised proffers.
I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a second. You can vote. Mr. Unger?
Unger, yes.
Marston, yes.
Ambrogi, yes.
Manure, yes.
Klein, yes.
Och, yes.
Kent?
Bolton, yes.
Morrison, yes.
Trippett, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Chair of Oches. Motion is denied for the rezoning. It'll go to the board supervisors on February thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I will forward all of the messages I received to the staff so they can include them in the package that goes to the board for the meeting, and also the letters that, I don't think you received those either.
Thank you. Our next item, Ms. Perkins. The exciting part of the meeting. All right, our next item is an information discussion item, is our two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-four capital improvement plan. This C I P is a prioritized list of capital projects requested by various county departments and agencies. The plan is created as an information component of the two thousand thirty-five comprehensive plan. Ms. Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As you stated, this is a discussion for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-four capital improvement plan. The C I P is a document that consists of a schedule of major capital expenditures for the county for the ensuing five-year period, as well as a category for long-term projects, which are six-plus years out. Now, I would note that the inclusion of projects on the C I P is in no way an indication that Frederick County will be undergoing these projects. The C I P is strictly advisory. It is not intended to be used, I'm sorry, it is intended to be used as a capital facilities planning document, not for requesting funding allocations. Now, once adopted, project priorities and cost estimates may change throughout the year based on changing circumstances, and it is also possible that a particular project may not be funded during the year it is indicated in the C I P. Now, this year's C I P continues to reinforce the connection between the C I P, the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, and future rezoning applications. Now, within the C I P, there's a total of seventy-nine projects. They include projects requested by schools, parks and recreation, the library, county administration, fire and rescue, transportation, and the Winchester Regional Airport. Now, I would note that those are broken down into three different tables, similar to what was presented last year. I'm not going to try to go through those, but those are the tables that were included in your C I P. There's also a number of maps that correspond to those projects, such as general county administration expenditures, public schools, parks and recreation, and transportation projects. Now, the C P P C Conference of Plans and Programs Committee discussed this at their December twenty eighteen meeting, and they did determine that the C I P is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and they sent it forward to the planning commission for discussion. So, tonight, we are seeking a recommendation from the planning commission for the C I P, as well as affirmation that the C I P is in conformance with the twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Perkins? See none?
Thank you.
Thank you. This is just an information discussion item, so has anybody got any discussion on this matter, or are we all in favor? I would like to add that I think that a lot of work goes into our comp plans and our, our necessary capital improvement plan. It's, it's a long, and it's a hard-worth endeavor by a lot of departments, whether it be parks and rec, or it could be fire and rescue, the school systems, different ones, there's a lot of work goes into this. So, all that hard work is greatly appreciated, and even back to staff for keeping us moving forward on a timely fashion, so we stay with where we're supposed to be. So, I think that, I don't think any actions required on this, other than say we're moving forward, I believe, isn't it? Or do we need, do we need a map of motion?
We need affirmation that it's in conformance with the comprehensive plan and a recommendation to the, to the board supervisors.
That comes from me? Do I just make a recommendation, or do I ask for a motion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, that's okay in this situation. We can just take the information, because we'll have a public hearing at a later, excuse me, at a later date. So, this is any information that moves forward.
All right. I'm getting little mixed signals there, so you have our affirmation that we move forward and send it on to the board for the February thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting. With that, we're down to our, our other items, and what I'd like to bring everyone's attention to is we have a new face on our commission.
It's an old face.
He's a familiar face. He's usually sitting on the other side. Mr. Allen Morrison has joined us from member-at-large. He's now, and we welcome him. Thank you, sir. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to.
Second.
We have a second?
Can I just mention a couple of things under other, if that'd be okay?
Oh, sir, I'm sorry, I was moving too quick for you.
That's okay. The one thing we could go back and address, if that's okay, would be the approval of the minute on November seventh, item number three. Okay, we, we skipped over that one and all of our business at the beginning of the meeting.
I thought I said the November seventh and the, and the December fifth, two thousand and eighteen minutes is what I.
You did.
Sure you did.
I thought I said both of them.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we good?
We're just making sure that was.
Yeah, I thought I mentioned both.
Okay, and we have no meeting scheduled for the February, first meeting in February, so we'll, we won't be seeing you then. And under the bylaws and the roles and responsibilities, there is one item in there that I wanted to kind of recognize, and that's the continuing education opportunities that are available to the planning commissioners and board members. Virginia Commonwealth University have picked up the baton, if you will, for that continuing education program, and will be offering it again here this spring. So, I'll make that, the planning commissioner aware of that, and be sending out an email with that information for any planning commissioners who may be interested in doing that.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Roddy. Appreciate it. And with that, are we adjourned?
I want to be a smarty pants.
All those in favor of adjournment? All right. Adjourn.